Welcome, everybody. We have 2015-2017 conference agenda. We're gonna start with that and we need a roll call.
Freeholders, Hopter, Bartlett, Bass, Duffy, LaBour, Deputy Director James, Director Lizarra.
Here. Administrative report.
Thank you, Director. First on the agenda, we are going to recognize the Pompton Lakes High School bowling team. They are, bowlers, of course, are involved in spring sports and couldn't be here, but we are honored to have bowling coach Doug Bach saying correctly. Why don't you come to the podium and give the freeholders a little background of this tremendous season, maybe before the, unless the freeholder wants to be the member for proclamation first, but...
Thank you so much for recognizing us. I apologize, I'm so, I forget the umbrella today. We had an unbelievable season this year. We won our, the county tournament, we won our leagues, we won the state sectionals, we went down to the state finals, took second place. So unfortunately, the kids couldn't be here, they could play in spring sports, I guess, like you said before, so, but they thank you very much. My E.D. thanks you very much. I thank you very much for the recognition, so...
Great. Have we yet, were the three members that rolled the 300 this year?
Uh, three members bowled the 300 this year, correct. Yeah, three different, I believe that's the first time.
First time this ever happened. For those of us who bowl Kelly, right?
Why? Why, I bowl the 8.5, is that impressive?
What's that?
8.5, I got 8.5.
That would mean something if it weren't with the bumpers.
Yeah, right. Exactly. So, let me breathe a quick proclamation here honoring our great champions. Whereas the Board of Chosen Freeholders of County of St. has a desire to recognize the Pompton Lakes High School bowling team, recently captured this season's NJIC Colonial State County and North 1B Group 1 Championships. And whereas Pompton Lakes has a knack for doing things in threes, the Cardinals were the only North Jersey team to complete a triple crown this winter. They won the NJIC Colonial Division, St. County, North 1 Group, and the 1st Sectional Championships. And whereas Pompton Lakes became the first North Jersey school to have three for bowlers to bowl 300 games in the same season, which historic accomplishment clinched Cardinal status as the record bowler's bowling team of the year. Whereas the Cardinals, county tournament total of 2,993 was good for their first state titles since 2013. Two weeks later, they earned their fourth state sectional crown in five years, four out of five years, with a total of 2,813. Whereas Pompton Lakes fired its, fired its best tournament total of 3,040 at the February 17th state team finals, placed second in Group 1 behind Nashville. And whereas Cardinals came at number three on the records final top 10, they're in the record new finals top 10, they're 1,199.3 per bowler league average, second only to number two in the hills, and a per man tournament average of 186.6, ranked third after number one in Pascagoula and number four in winning hills. Whereas Pompton Lakes was second to none in perfect games, junior David Neal bowled the first 300 in program history in the team's December 8th NJIC Colonial game. Then senior Nick Solento, the 2015 state individual champion, bowled a perfect game on January 12th. His final average, 222.8, led North Jersey. And senior Esteban Garcia bowled a perfect game on January 13th, with all three accomplishments were achieved at the Hartway Lakes. Now therefore be proclaimed by the Board of Chosen Freeholders of the County of St. that it publicly extends heartfelt congratulations to the entire Pompton Lakes bowling team and its coach Doug Bach, and be it further proclaimed that this board expresses sincere best wishes to the entire team for continued success in all their future endeavors. Congratulations.
My last one's certificate, so, for all the students. For all the students, this is a great, just kind of, just a...
Tell them congratulations, thank you so much. Thank you, everyone.
By the way, I have an extra umbrella in my car if you want. Very important, seriously, very important.
Uh, ready for us, it's true.
You got that, like, cover?
I walked down, I know exactly where I was going, so, I walked down a little bit.
Well, I'm serious, if you want it, I'll run down.
No, that's okay. That's okay. Thank you very much. Thank you, everybody.
Director, next on the agenda is something of a great milestone, and as you know, St. County, we like to pride ourselves on our rich history, and obviously, the city of Clifton is celebrating its 100th anniversary, such a large part of the history that we celebrate here in the St. County. And we have a proclamation, which I guess, Freeholder James, being from the city of Clifton, actually, I think Bruce was there prior to incorporation. In her, he just came with the whole package. We are honored to have the mayor of the great city, Jim Anzaldi, along with some of his council people, start with Councilwoman Lauren Murphy, Councilman Bill Gibson, former freeholder, and now councilman, freeholder, councilman, now councilman. Peter, I don't know, maybe the first time back in the room since she left this great day, is Peter? Yes, you've been there? Good to see you. Why don't you join Freeholder James for the proclamation and, yeah, congratulations.
Well, it's as brief as this. It's, Clifton's got rich history, so, we're gonna go to the home. You did. You did. We got, it's real good this year. And they're teasing me, Clifton is my hometown, probably. So, I'm thankful to all of you, if you spend money, this board would be great, so, it's a forum. Okay, good. So, this is the proclamation for the city of Clifton, and this is the 100th birthday anniversary for the city of Clifton. So whereas Board of Chosen Freeholders of the County of St. is aware that the city of Clifton is celebrating its 100th anniversary with a centennial celebration, and whereas the city of Clifton was established by a successful referendum on April 24th, 1917, so I wasn't there, Tony, and it changed its official status on April 26th, 1917, when the papers were filed with the Secretary of State's office in Trent, become New Jersey's 12th city. Whereas the city of Clifton is hosting many events to mark the centennial throughout the year, including opening of the Time Capsule, a masquerade cocktail party, summer concert series, a day at Yankee Stadium, Clifton Night at the Jackals, a vintage baseball game, museum visits, a trip to the 9/11 museum, a trip to Ellis and Liberty Island, a trip to Laurel and Regent, a performance by a United States Marine Band, a scavenger hunt in Lawrence backyard, a musical from the Theatre League of Clifton, a poetry reading at the Clifton Public Library, the Old Wood Women's Club Celebration, the Centennial Parade, and the Centennial Gala. Where, that's quite a bit. And whereas the city of Clifton is a vital component of the St. County community, and has made numerous contributions to the county, and whereas the Board of Chosen Freeholders of the County of St. would like to join the celebration of this anniversary with the city of Clifton, as they look back on the proud heritage of hard work, family, community, faith, patriotism, and look forward to a great future with this diverse population, now therefore be it proclaimed that the Board of Chosen Freeholders of the County of St. hereby congratulate the city of Clifton on its 100th anniversary and wishes them a prosperous future, and mayor, two words, really, I'm, real, I'm...
I haven't been to here for a long time. When I was here?
Yes.
Clifton's a proud place, it's a family place, it's a place where people raise their children, and one thing that we know, it's a well-run, good community. Last year, there's only about 600, high 600s of towns in the United States, over 65,000 people were one of them, and when the independent study was done, last year, we were named 21 of 600 and something, and we're really proud of that, because it's taken a lot of hard work on the part of government, but I did it all for our people, because they're strong people, and they watch their neighborhoods, and they protect their town, and that's why we've been so successful so long. So, thank you very much, about what you all, don't forget, great May 21st, we expect you all to march.
And, how long have you been mayor?
Uh, 20 days.
Is that, that's a record, is it, huh? So Jimmy's been mayor for 27 years, and he keeps getting reelected at number one, so we're proud of you, and we're proud of all of you, really, you're doing a great job, and I really mean that sincerely.
We've got to introduce a group here, come on.
Hi, you got the big guy on.
Thanks, guys, thank you very much. Thank you.
Bye. Bye. I care, I thought you showed you about summer. Okay.
Pete, how you doing? How you been?
And three, apparently, we have a proclamation celebrating the last little birthday of one of the freeholders. Credit for that. Apparently Terry Duffy has turned 65 years old. And apparently, the proclamation is, you have one last place.
I've been chosen, directed by the director, to read this proclamation honoring my colleague and running mate, Terrence Duffy. Terrence J. All right, Freeholder, Terrence. Everybody knows Terry Duffy as someone who has a great sense of humor, but a lot of people may not know that Terry's a very generous individual, except when it's his turn to buy. So, it's, it'd be great pleasure to read this proclamation honoring my big buddy, Terry Duffy, on his birthday, even though I'm older than him, which actually makes me the dean of this board. The Board of Chosen Freeholders of the County of St. is aware that freeholder Terry Duffy will be honored at a birthday celebration on Monday, happening just today, at the Brownstone. Terry Duffy is the longest-serving freeholder on the current Board of Chosen Freeholders, along with his running mate, yours truly, Matt LaBour, me. They have served since 2004, and during this tenure, he has been committed to improving county services while keeping taxpayers in mind. It is 13 years of service, he has helped raise the St. County's monitoring to the title of district, and for the first time in decades, about their budget in 2017, that they've not raised taxes. Terry was chosen by his colleagues to serve as Freeholder Director in 2011, and he was hands-on during the aftermath of Hurricane Irene, by helping to create 10 satellite offices throughout the county to provide better access to social service programs. Throughout his time on the board, Terry Duffy has served on numerous standing committees. He is especially proud of his work on the Camp Hope Commission by providing once-in-a-lifetime opportunities for underprivileged youth, as well as all of our county's seniors. Terry Duffy is a lifelong St. County resident, and business owner in Patterson. He is the owner of Duffy's Tavern on River and First, or is it River? Which plays a significant role each year in March by facilitating events that allow residents of St. County to celebrate St. Patty's Day. Terry Duffy is active in the community, he's a charter member of the Patterson chapter of the Blue Knights Organization, the recipient of the Silver Card Holder Award, the highest award given to civilian by the PBA, a member of the New Jersey Botanical Garden Advisory Committee, and regional director of the New Jersey License Federation. Whereas Terry Duffy is a strong and avid supporter of the St. County Emerald Society of Python Drum, he was a recipient of the St. Thomas Moore Award from Blessed Sacrament in Patterson in 2007. He was saluted as a guest of honor by the H. Order of the Hyperion, Michael L. Delhuntey, Division 9 of Montclair, during its 109th anniversary of St. Patty's Day celebration in 2009. And in 2010, he served as grand marshal for the 21st Annual St. Patty's Day Parade in Ringland. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Board of Chosen Freeholders of the County of St. that thereby extends its best birthday wishes to Terry Duffy, and joins him in celebration with his family and friends on this joyous occasion. Be it further proclaimed that this board extends its best wishes to him, to for committed health and prosperity. No frame? No frame? No, we're cutting back. Thank everyone, we're, we're, thanks successful, because we have a great board behind us, and we have big employees in the county department, and a second in mine, and I'm proud to serve on freeholders board, and especially this freeholder board, with my little friends here. Thank you so much. I'll be at Versa River on April 27th, that's Thursday, come down, have a couple of drinks, have something to eat.
On you. On you. On you. Drinks on Terry.
And we'll move on to the review of the agenda, N1 through N26. And county councils, report committees, we're going to get into session.
And answer 33, you know, your annulate status, more than that.
Okay, thank you. And as we begin the conference agenda, we'll be moving on to the meeting agenda. Do you have a motion to close?
Can I move second? Freeholders, Hopter, Bartlett, Bass, Duffy, LaBour, Deputy Director James, Director Lizarra. Ladies and gentlemen, the notice requirement of the vote for public means law has been satisfied with respect to the meaning specifying the time, date, location, including the annual notice adopted of the reorganization meeting filed with the county clerk, posted in the administration building, and mailed to two newspapers in accordance with the provisions of the law. Freeholders, Hopter, Bartlett, Bass, Duffy, LaBour, Deputy Director James, Director Lizarra.
Please stand for the application.
Oh God, who provides for thy people by thy power and rules over them in love, be gracious enough so to bless thy servants, our freeholders, in this county of St., that thy people may dwell in peace and safety through our Lord. Amen.
Please draw names, so when you can flag.
Flag to this to the flag of the United States of America, and to a republic for which stands, our nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And just a moment of silence to remember all the men and women who have died while serving in the United States armed forces. Do we need a motion for a few minutes of medical...
Make that motion, second.
Duffy and James.
Freeholders, Hopter, Bartlett, Bass, Duffy, LaBour, Deputy Director James, Director Lizarra.
Do you have a motion for the two board proclamations? Bartlett and then Duffy.
Freeholders, Hopter, Bartlett, Bass, Duffy, LaBour, Deputy Director James, Director Lizarra.
Motion to suspend the regular order of business?
Freeholders, Hopter, Bartlett, Bass, Duffy, LaBour, Deputy Director James, Director Lizarra.
Bond Ordinance 2017-05.
Bond Ordinance, Amending Bond Ordinance Number 2016-09, finally adopted by the Board of Chosen Freeholders of the County of St. New Jersey on September 13th, 2016.
I have a motion to open the public hearing on Bond Ordinance 2017-05.
Deputy, uh, LaBour, Bartlett. Freeholders, Hopter, Bartlett, Bass, Duffy, LaBour, Deputy Director James, Director Lizarra.
Okay, does anyone desire to be heard on Bond Ordinance 2017-05? Motion to close the public hearing on Bond Ordinance 2017-05.
Freeholders, Hopter, Bartlett, Bass, Duffy, LaBour, Deputy Director James, Director Lizarra.
Yes. Motion to adopt Bond Ordinance 2017-05.
Freeholders, Hopter, Bartlett, Bass, Duffy, LaBour, Deputy Director James, Director Lizarra.
Do you have a motion to resume the regular order of business?
Freeholders, Hopter, Bartlett, Bass, Duffy, LaBour, Deputy Director James, Director Lizarra.
Freeholder reports.
Director, if I may, just, I do want to know that the courts today, the court in front of me struck down or put a stay on the Trump Administration Sanctuary Cities Order, which threatens different vocalities and municipalities with losing federal funding if they don't comply with federal mandates, which they're not legally required to comply with. And I just want to know, you know, the fact that this order does not, there is no such rule definition of what a sanctuary city is, and I've heard wild rumors of which towns are sanctuary cities and which ones aren't, many of them have never declared themselves sanctuary cities, and many of them have taken certain actions, and many have had it. And so I think this issue, this issue is very unclear, and unfortunately, these orders come down, you know, come down heavy-handedly and not really careful. And I express concern about this whole issue because of our county and the diversity we could have, and the fact that, you know, others may see our county as a target, unfortunately, because of the population we have, and I, as a freeholder, am certainly concerned about the situation overall.
I just want to talk about a letter that I have to sign today, and that's going out to the mayor's, C.C., to our senators, and to our congressmen, and this has to do with CDBG money. Since 1974, we've been funded with CDBG money, which is used for our infrastructure, helping nonprofits, helping the disabled, our seniors, it helps people with affordable housing. And every year, we get money, and it goes to 12 municipalities, because the other ones have their own. But, one of the things on the upcoming budget that the president is passing is to eliminate this funding to our cities, our counties, to the state, and the letter, the end of the letter says that we should all reach out to our congressmen, to our senators, and voice our opinion that this can't happen. There are going to be too many vulnerable marginalized people who are going to be affected by this, and it bothers me to say that our president would even consider cutting this funding to our cities. So, with that, I just want to let you know that unless we speak up and our voices are heard, this could very likely happen, and we'd be out quite a bit of money for all municipalities to help them. So, that's what I have to say, because I was really upset by this, having to send this letter. Anyone else?
Hopter.
Go ahead.
Yesterday, we had our public works meeting, and we had a chance to discuss the improvements that we're making at Rife Camp Park. One of such improvements are the proposed disc golf course, and at the last freeholder meeting, we said that we would do a presentation to discuss the disc golf course, and in doing it, because it's only one component of the overall improvements that we're looking to make at Rife Camp Park, at our next freeholder meeting, we're going to have a fuller presentation that includes all of the improvements that we're looking to do at Rife Camp Park. So that will not be today, it'll be at our next freeholder meeting, in which we will have a presentation done, about Rife Camp Park. Sorry, that meeting is May 9th. So, May 9th, here, 6:00 p.m. Or we're gonna do, before? 5:30, excuse me. 5:30, May 9th, here.
Communications? None? I'd like to make a motion to open the public portion of the meeting. James and Bartlett.
Freeholders, Hopter, Bartlett, Bass, Duffy, LaBour, Deputy Director James, Director Lizarra.
Anyone wishing to come up with a name and address? You have three minutes to speak, so, come on up.
My name is Robert Isaiah, I live in the city of Patterson. The title of my three minutes is "People Preferred." Why is the St. County's Human Resources Department engaging in an officialized, legalized, de jure form of job discrimination? For instance, why is the Parks Department advertising jobs that prefers applicants to be bilingual? This automatically implies that English-speaking job applicants who were natively born in the United States would not be considered fairly for any position in this county. That's what that implies. Additional, here are some additional points to consider when deciding whether this de jure form of job discrimination continues or is fundamentally fair to applicants. Number one, there is no intrinsic job discrimination against Hispanics in the St. County. Why are bilingual preferred applicants needed then? If there is a customer that can't speak English, that is their prerogative. Here's why. Seeing there is no discrimination against Hispanics, there is always an Hispanic on a site, on a job, somewhere that would be happy to translate. Why are we accommodating non-English-speaking Hispanics who are unwilling, by character or volition, to learn English? ESL classes are filled to the brim by Hispanics every day, so why are we accommodating this small minority of people that refuse to make themselves better, like others are doing? When Italians, French, Germans, Irish, Jamaicans came to this country, they did not require or request anything bilingual. They learned English. Most grassroots Hispanics don't feel a need for, to request bilingual accommodation. It appears to be racist Caucasians and Hispanics who speak, speak English already, are pushing bilingual preferred jobs. If you and I had to move to a predominantly Hispanic, German, or Russian locale, for example, there would be no special accommodations made for us as English speakers. We would have to learn a new language in order to communicate. So why is this paradigm suddenly being altered to accommodate those that need no accommodation in the St. County? This scenario will be monitored closely, because it presents a danger to all the St. County residents who think they will be treated fairly when applying for employment in the St. County. This discriminatory, de jure employment scenario... County. This discriminatory, de jure employment scenario guarantees this will not occur. I urge the members of the freeholders to contact the Passaic County Human Resource Director to examine this policy, and please weigh carefully the residual effect of the arrogant approach exhibited by the freeholders in the past when an issue has been brought to your attention by a City of Patterson resident. I'm counting on you people to do absolutely nothing about this scenario. Then the audit trail begins. I'm Robert Isaiah. I'm the resident of the largest city in Passaic County. Thank you for your time.
Good evening. My name is Jeff Mahler. I lived in Bluefield at the time. I am a former resident of West Patterson back in the eighties. I've lived in Clifton for many years, and a number of the places in the area. I've been playing disc golf for almost 30 years now. I'm sorry. It's 11 Salter Place, Bluefield. I've been quite involved in numerous course construction and design in this area, including Warwick, New York, Camp Col, New Jersey, and the latest one that I have co-designed in Morris Plains. I know you want to talk about this further in the next meeting, so I won't take up too much time, but I did want to try to dispel a few myths about the fact that we are not in here to try to take away anybody's land. Disc golf works very well within, and shares space with community parks. It helps to add additional recreational opportunities to the residents from ages five to eighty. It was brought to me by a gentleman named Adam Harris, who was contacted by the county that they wanted to do this, and were looking for someone to help design a course. When he found out that I was a local, that I was this local, he shared it with me, and I had luck. The park, within a few times, started to develop the design. I understand there are concerns about safety, nature, and I think that in discussions, we can come to a mutual agreement that we can cohabit, co-use the space. I think this is a perfect place for this actually, and it would be a great addition to the park system and the recreation they offer. Again, I think we'll be talking about this further in the next meeting, but I feel as long as we're here, we'll start the discussion. Thank you. The tables are not going to be able to leave, you guys.
Is there anyone else wishing to come up to the podium to speak? Talking about the disc golf thing. Garrett Mountain comprises of the two parks, is part of the National Natural Landmark. Oh, it's Diane Connor, 70 sites, Washington Avenue, Clifton, New Jersey. Okay, the parks are part of the National Natural Landmarks. It's also an important bird area, IDA. Habitat destruction, both by you guys, funded by Horizon. We can't coexist. We either have the habitat or not. It's your responsibility to protect that habitat. My background is, I have, I got my degrees in biology and ecology from Rutgers University, and incidentally, also had a disc golf thing, and now I'm going to play. But cutting down trees, that's part of the habitat. If you look up, you ought to watch the study, the papers I gave you guys, that park is known for its migrant population. It has owls and woodpeckers that nest there. Last year, you guys went in and cut a bunch of trees out in that other park. It's your responsibility to protect that resource. Cutting down trees and removing them, if you're removing that habitat, it's deforestation and habitat destruction. Back in the nineties, I was a volunteer up at a major center there, and we had any children's programs. You did pond study, rocketry, astronomy, and bird stuff. Instead of applying for grants for goofy things that destroy the habitat, what you guys really need to do is what Essex and Burton County does. You guys need to apply for grants to update, add a classroom, and do some other programs up there, and use that habitat as a classroom the way you should do it. We did bird walks, and we did other things. And I, you know, it's like, other counties are doing more extensive programs. If you built a classroom, you could have field trips, which is what other counties do. Destroying the habitat and some sort of land grab for, you know, these boutique interests, it's just not right. It's your job to protect that habitat. My background now is, I work in zoos. I've worked with birds and mammals. That's what I do professionally. Also done, I do education programs there, and I understand education programs, and that's what you guys really should be doing. That is a natural park. It's, I also gave you something from the New Jersey-New York Trail Conference. And you guys need to know that passive recreation uses that park. Birding is a major economic drive. People come from, you don't realize it, but people come from a distance to go birding up there. They stop at Dunkin' Donuts, they get stuff to eat, and they stop at a grocery store. They're bringing money in. They're not showing or anything else like that, or disturbing anybody. People walk their dogs up there and hike. It's listed in the trail conference. If you remove the habitat, you don't have it anymore. I'm sorry, your three minutes is up. Okay. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Viral Azar, a Clifton resident, 22 Spencer Ave, and a member of Friends of Garrett Mountain. I spoke at the last meeting regarding the disc golf course, and once again, I appeal to you, the freeholders, to reject the plan to install the disc golf course at this location. I would like to bring about a few important other points to consider. First, just want to say that there seems to be an idea going around that the Friends of Garrett Mountain are simply looking to keep the park for ourselves, and that we don't want other people to use the park. Nothing could be farther from the truth. We are, in fact, wanting and encouraging people to come to the parks. We want the parks to be an enjoyable and relaxing place for everyone. Activities such as disc golf would prevent other people from enjoying the park. Please understand, we have nothing against the sport of disc golf. Rifle Camp Park is just not the appropriate location. The park is used by many people already, and one simply can't enjoy a serene walk through the park if you must be on guard for applying discs and fearing for your personal safety. It was stated that the course would not be located near any trails. Now, while this may be true, that it may not intersect any of the main hiking trails, it does actually pass extremely close and even follow directly along some of the park's quieter nature trails. Therefore, this project will take all those nature trails, paths, and areas out of safe use for other people. It was also stated that the course was designed and to be placed in storm-damaged areas. In truth, the plan will severely degrade the natural environment of the park. The course, in fact, passes through stands of healthy young saplings and healthy forest, and follows along some of the most sensitive ridge-top environments in the park. It should also be clear that it's not solely the Friends of Garrett Mountain who oppose this plan. As you probably know, the Friends have a petition which now has over 700 signatures. And finally, I'd like to say again that Rifle Camp Park is the only quiet natural park in Lower Passaic County. The efforts to revitalize the Highlands Preserve in West Milford is a wonderful endeavor, and one that I personally and completely support. In reference to that, it has been stated, and I quote, "That the freeholders continue to invest in our park system and protect our county's natural resources. A well-maintained park system increases property values, creates a draw for tourists, and enriches the lives of those in our community. We couldn't agree more. We only ask that this high level of environmental stewardship will also be shown for Rifle Camp Park and in Lower Passaic County as well." Thank you.
Hi, my name is Chris Tackus. I'm the president of Friends of Garrett Mountain. This is Bishop. I've been at 720 Olive Street, I'm a long-time resident of, 720 Olive Street, I'm a long-time resident of Clifton. I have lived my life till recently, until, until then. Like Vera said, the Friends of Garrett Mountain is not opposed to this sport. We're just opposed to it being brought to Rifle Camp Park. I believe Freeholder James at the last meeting said that there are other places, there are other parks where this can be implemented without destroying this critical habitat. This is a small park, and it's part of Garrett Mountain. Garrett Mountain is part of the eastern flyway for millions of migrating songbirds that need to get to Canada to nest. By putting this course in, you fragment parts of that forest. You're talking about taking down 100-plus trees that are between one inch and six inches. That's the trees that are going to restore the forest. Those are the trees that are going to replace the 70, 80, and 100-year-old trees that have suffered through some of the big storms that have been torn apart. That's the forest, that's the forest that needs to be removed. You can't take those trees down just to do this. There are other places to put this course, and we, again, love to see it, just not here. Rifle Camp is too important. As far as what the county park system is proposing for the work that they're doing on forest restoration all through the county, it seems that Garrett Mountain is being treated as Garrett Mountain Reservation, and that's where all the forest work will be done. Rifle Camp Park is just as integral part of Garrett Mountain as the reservation is. It's a continuation. These birds move all through, the entire corridor, all the way up the entire flyway. They just continue following these mountain ridges. Once they leave Garrett, their next move is to try to get to High Mountain. That's the next mountain, and then they continue to work their way in Florida. I've seen a lot of degradation of forest in, up in Mawa, where the, where Camp Col Reservation is. There's loads of places on the course where there are complete washouts from the fact that the soil's been compacted by everybody walking through there. There are clear pathways where 20, 30 yards wide, where you just see nothing but dirt, mud, roots of trees, and not sign of any life other than the trees and stuff that are around it. You have to go 50, 60 feet off the course to find any sort of life. And what I saw when I went there last week was that any sort of plants and stuff that were growing on the forest floor were already starting to be trampled because these guys were planting on their course. They did not want to walk through the mud, get their feet wet, so they continued to walk around, and that 30 feet now becomes 50, becomes 60, and 12 acres doesn't become, doesn't stay, 12 acres, it becomes 24. It takes up more and more space as we go along. So, thank you very much.
Anyone else wishing to come up here?
Seeing no one in the party.
I'm sorry.
Good evening. My name is Gina DeRoche. I live up on Garrett Mountain, 132 Quartz Lane in Patterson. And I have to say that I can't recall in recent history an item that came before the council where there were over 700 online signatures voicing individual concerns against this particular project. And I know that Viral Azar mentioned that fact before, but I would really like to emphasize the fact that among the constituents in this area, already, there are over 700 people who are not thrilled about the idea of this disc course in the park. I also want to say that, I suppose I can imagine that the freeholders, with all that you have to do, may not be as particularly concerned about a tree being removed, or a plant being stamped out. But for those people who use Rifle Camp Park, which is a natural park preserve, they have an appreciation of nature that may go beyond those of us who don't frequent the park as they do, not to mention the wildlife. So I would just like to reemphasize the fact and to impress upon you that, in this particular instance, none of us is opposed to the idea of a disc course, just not in our, not in our backyard park. Thank you.
Rock call.
Freeholders, Hopter, Bartlett, Best, Duffy, LaFour, Deputy Director James, Rachel Lazar.
Yes. Make a motion to accept the resolutions on the agenda and 1 to 26. Rock call.
Freeholders, Hopter, Bartlett, Best, Duffy, LaFour, Deputy Director James, Rachel Lazar.
Yes. Okay, our term of business.
Man, Director, we have received the supplemental debt statement for April 25, 2017.
And number two, the guarantee, 2017-06.
Resolution authorizing the guarantee by the County of Passaic, New Jersey, of payments of principal and interest on the governmental loans revenue bonds, Series 2017, Passaic County Guarantee, City of Patterson Project, of the Passaic County Improvement Authority, in an aggregate principal amount not exceeding 400, 40 million, yeah, 40 million.
I have a motion to approve the guarantee. Ordinance 2017-06, first reading. James and LaFour.
Freeholders, Hopter, Bartlett, Best, Duffy, LaFour, Deputy Director James, Rachel Lazar.
Yes. Bond Ordinance 2017-07.
Capital ordinance of the, of the County of Passaic, New Jersey, authorizing the undertaking of various improvements to Garrett Mountain Reservation, and by board of the county appropriating therefore the sum of $2,750,000, and providing that such sum so appropriate shall be raised from the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection, Green Interest Grant, and from the general capital fund balance of the county.
I have a motion to approve Bond Ordinance 2017-07. Rock call.
Freeholders, Hopter, Bartlett, Best, Duffy, LaFour, Deputy Director James, Rachel Lazar.
Yes. Do I have a motion to approve the personnel? James and LaFour. Rock call.
Freeholders, Hopter, Bartlett, Best, Duffy, LaFour.
Freeholders, actor, Bartlett, Best, Duffy, just before, Deputy Director James, Brett
Lusar.
Yes. Make a motion to accept the grant.
Freeholders, actor, Bartlett, Best, Duffy, just before, Deputy Director James, Brett Lusar.
Yes. Make a motion to accept the certification of payroll.
Freeholders, actor, Bartlett, Best, Duffy, just before, Deputy Director James, Brett Lusar.
Yes.
Receive the file.
I didn't want to make a quick conclusion out of the debate, but I appreciate you coming out and helping us. Really, we're benefiting from you participating in the general information program next time. Uh, it is, it's noteworthy that there are people coming out on both sides, there are online petitions on both sides, and, uh, obviously we move through our meeting rather quickly sometimes, but I don't want anyone to think that we're not listening, uh, paying attention and balancing any issues that we're, that we're learning from you, uh, that we're learning from our staff as well about all of that. I do appreciate what everybody came out to say. Sorry that Mr. Fayed left. I don't have to agree with him on that issue. In fact, there are a lot of things that the St. County does and continue to do to make sure that services can get to eligible people no matter what language it is. Part of that, man, I appreciate you guys, and there are opportunities for us to provide services in the ranks of our various organizations.
I, I agree with the first part anyway. I think it's great that we hear both sides. Um, I took a ride down to Oger County and there's a great course out there, this course, and spoke to, uh, a number of people. It seemed to impact the county this big park, uh, to be honest with you, but, you know, it's good to hear some information of both, both sides of it. Uh, nothing's written in stone here. We want to do the best for, for everyone. And as Vera Lazar says, we're listening, we are listening. I appreciate you, and thank you for coming out and expressing views. It's helpful of us, thank you. As far as the language issue, she learned English, you know, the primary English, and I kept myself in trouble, but, um, and we can't, we can't say we have to be bilingual, I don't think, legally, we can't, we can't require, we're not required. Oh, it's not required.
Well, if I, if I could, Freeholder, I do think there's two things that were offensive to me in that statement that he made. One, assuming that saying bilingual meant, uh, Spanish, when we have multiple languages spoken throughout the county, bilingual could mean any number of languages. And two, this is not an, he treated it like an affirmative action type issue, that this was meant to increase Hispanic, again, assuming Hispanic, assuming it's a good employment. It's, uh, it's a skill just like any other, knowing the language. When I was going, when I was going to college, it was a requirement of my, of my major, something that I wasn't particularly good at and was lucky to pass. But, learning another language, I, yeah, English was the one I didn't learn. But, uh, but, but language is a skill, just like any other experience or any other thing. So for the county to ask people, to encourage people with bilingual skills is only trying to encourage people, employment, who have a broader array of skills than otherwise, so.
And, and sure, I have to do a brief, I wish as immigrants to have the opportunity to learn English, and by community policy, as we as of that, in the meantime, we're getting services, while they learn. I, I happen to live overseas in a country where I didn't speak the language when I got there, uh, but, uh, there were signs and services and publicly funded, broadcast media towards the languages in that country that, uh, you know, while folks are, are immigrating, while folks will be asking for English, they're, 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 they're.
I agree with you. Yes, I'm trying to learn for myself. Thank you.
Can I put your question?
If I can, I, I just, um, resolution authorizing the guarantee of the payment of principal of interest to, uh, bonds for the City of Patterson. I find it interesting that, noteworthy that there's nobody here in the governing body, the City of Patterson, encouraging us or applauding us for taking this action, given the fact that the, uh, the city is faced with very difficult, uh, difficult times and the fact that the county, uh, county freeholder board recognized that they need assistance. Uh, I think it would behoove the, uh, the leaders of the City of Patterson to be here at the very least to encourage us to continually endeavor that, which we, do they even know that we're doing this? Do they understand what we're doing and how we're assisting them and helping them? Uh, I think that should be communicated to the governing body, the City of Patterson. I don't mean, uh, to be critical, I just find it noteworthy that they're not here. I know that if I sat on a governing body of any of our sixteen members of ours, which I did at one time, uh, I would be very appreciative and, and I would be here encouraging, uh, the freeholder board, uh, to continue, uh, what they're doing here, even though it's being done through the improvement authority, the fact that that is, we're guaranteed. So, uh, I'd like to have that communicated to the governing body of Patterson, uh, to make hopefully a big, a big sacrifice for, for doing, uh, and that, at very least, someone would be here on the night that, uh, it's, it's approved. That's my two cents.
I think you should follow up, though, Freeholder, with, uh, the risk is really real. Funding, they call it, they, uh, it's a great risk, but they have a difficulty selling funds, they were really stepping in and helping them. It's not really a risk to the citizens, you could say, having, like a lot of people just understood that, and I do, they should have been here. They should be, they really should be thanking us because they would have a difficult time selling a bond. So, uh, you know, we did step in and try, uh, as we, yeah, I agree.
Okay, anybody else? Have another question?
Freeholders, actor, Bartlett, Best, Freeholder Duffy, just before, Deputy Director James, Brett Lusar.
Yes. Thank you, everybody.